Every group would really enjoy a piece of.
There's gonna be some middle ground somewhere, I hope.
And that's what I like about having the first, second, third reading spread out over three months. That allows us to get gathering good.
Oh, absolutely.
And discussion as well.
When we passed the original ordinance just to do this, it was a very controversial subject. And, um, as you'll recall, and, uh, and I think when we get to the next stage of this, there'll also be some discomfort. But I still want to make sure that we accommodate as many people as we can on both sides of the issue. Because it, it's turned into one of those issues in Brock that's a very emotional issue for some, I guess. And, and we certainly understand both sides of the issue privately and hopefully too.
Whenever, with everybody that I spoke to, I explained to them that I've been around here for a long time. I wasn't trying to be partial to one side or the other. I want to find a happy median and it would be cut down and specify the times where people with breathing problems and so forth can possibly not endure.
We will definitely look into that with this committee.
We did it before. It can be done again.
We can do it, and we can do it again. It'll be alright.
I would appreciate that help, Mayor and Councilman.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Because it ultimately comes down to hearing put into the document how change it as you said.
We'll get together soon and figure out how we want to approach this. Uh, moving on to new business, uh, we have the wonderful world of finance tonight. First up, I believe it was a bond council update that, uh, council asked for. Uh, I know Joy sent out a little explanation and email what we'd found out from bond, but.
But Ryan wants to talk.
Well, we only heard back from one council member from the email, so.
Yes, so you guys have met Ryan before? Is Ryan Bowman, the bond council?
Thank you, Joy. Uh, Mayor members of the council, again, my name's Ryan Bowman. I'm with Friday Eldridge and Clark Law Firm in La Rock. Been before this council many times. We have served as bond council for the city, uh, over fifteen years. And so it's a pleasure to be back before you tonight. It's been a while since I've been here, so it's good to be back. Um, it's my understanding that you have some questions for me. Um, the most, one of the most recent bond issues that we did for the city was back in two thousand sixteen. And just for the sake of those that were not on the council at the time, back in August of two thousand sixteen, uh, the voters approved four questions. One was refunding, uh, Series two thousand six and two thousand seven bond issue that was originally done to finance, uh, Bishop Clark and, uh, the center. Uh, secondly, the voters approved some park improvements and parking wreck improvements. Uh, they also improved some fire improvements and, uh, the voters approved, uh, some street improvements. So those were the four purposes the voters approved back in two thousand sixteen. Uh, at the time, when we closed on that bond issue on December first of two thousand sixteen, uh, the city, uh, in its certificates in connection with that bond issue, said that you reasonably expected to spend at least eighty-five percent of the bond proceeds within a three-year period. Uh, there are some IRS rules that apply to tax exempt bonds. And the tax exempt bonds for, uh, that bond issue were done for the fire improvements and for the street improvements. What we did for the park improvements, that was done on a taxable basis, does not have the same three-year requirement that you spend the money within that period. So in two thousand sixteen, the city reasonably expected to spend eighty-five percent of those proceeds within three years for the fire improvements and the street improvements. That was a little over seventeen point five million dollars. It's my understanding that at the current time, uh, the city has not expended eighty-five percent of the proceeds of those bonds. And so I was asked to come to answer questions that you had with respect to what happens if you don't spend that amount of money within that three-year period. In order to, uh, invest the money at an unrestricted yield, what the IRS allows you to do is so long as you agree to s- spend that money within a three-year period, they allow you to invest those bond proceeds at a yield greater than the yield on bonds. The yield on the bonds was three point one three percent. And so your expectation again was that you would spend that money within that three-year period. So long as you reasonably expected to do that, then you could spend the bond or invest the proceeds at a yield greater than three point one three percent. To the extent that you don't spend the money within that three-year period, you are required to yield restrict the money. Which means the trustee for the bond issue that holds the construction funds for the fire and for the street improvements has to agree to yield restrict the money and not invest it at a yield greater than the yield on bonds. In today's interest rate environment, that's not a problem. Probably since two thousand sixteen, you've not invested the money at a yield greater than three point one three percent. But moving forward after that date, you would be restricted from investing the money at a yield greater than three point one three percent. If the IRS ever came in and audited your bond issue, uh, they would want to know what changed. Why on December one of two thousand sixteen did the city say you expected to spend the money within that three-year period? What changed from December one, two thousand sixteen to December one, two thousand nineteen? And that's not a question I can ask, but that's a question that I would recommend that you document for your files in case something were to happen, uh, that the IRS were to come in and audit that, that bond issue. So really, two things. One is you have to yield restrict the money after December one of two thousand nineteen. And two, you want to properly document that facts changed, conditions changed in that three-year period that prohibited you from being able to spend that money within that three-year period. So that's kind of a summary from, from where we were back in two thousand sixteen.
And I believe we have that documentation. It's all relating to the FAA, Joyce.
Short and simple. If we don't spend the money, we can relative to their investment of less than three point one percent yield until the money's spent from the budget.
Correct.
I didn't say anything weird or tough.
And there's no timeline on that, just because we didn't reach the three-year now we're.
There, there's not a timeline, but I would recommend that you spend that money used this year. Every day that goes by.
As soon as we can.
I know, I know, I know, I know you're ready. I know you're waiting on things that are outside your control. And that's part of the documentation process is you expected these, uh, conditions to be made. Obviously, that didn't happen, and so it's pretty fine, so.
And I believe we have that documentation from the engineers.
So is there any penalty outside of the yield restriction that you mentioned, you know, since we didn't make that eighty-five percent three-year?
There's really not. I mean, if the IRS ever started, you know, they came in and looked and didn't agree that your expectations were reasonable at the time, uh, between that bond issue two thousand sixteen, there could be some penalties associated with that. But as far as anything that you're having to pay then right now, there, there is not.
Any other questions for bond council? Thank you so much.
Thank you, all there.
Enjoy the rest of your evening. Now, Joy's turn.
Have we heard by chance on the bill grant?
We have. It's not good. Uh, in fact, it's so not good that nobody in Arkansas got the bill grant this year. There are a number of states where nobody got bill grants this year. It's strange. Cause I thought it was supposed to be distributed in previous year. I know it was, it was to be distributed a certain amount each, to each, each place. And then, you know, it's distributed in that state, but it didn't happen that way this year for some reason. I don't know why. But we did not get it, so. We're looking at other options.
Thank you.
Sorry, Joy.
Oh, it's okay. Um, also, just so you know, I have contacted the trustee. It's Regent's.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I believe I found an emergency up there.
Okay.
I have contacted Regent's and, um, gotten confirmation that we'll yield restrict those as of December first. Um, the first item is the regular October year-to-date report. Does anybody have any questions?
I have one, since we're getting close to the end of the year and, uh, our cash reserve is still higher than the hundred and twenty days. If we end the year and our cash reserves are still high, does that go automatically into reserves for the end of the year and we don't use that in the part of twenty twenty budget?
It'll just, it'll just go into our savings we can. Um, I'm gonna be bringing the capital back for general funds separately. I know that council asked at the last meeting to have a list of things that could be cut out of the budget if we had issues with the economy in twenty twenty. And, um, I did want to point out that there's not a tremendous amount in the current budget because there's not any capital in that budget. So items that could be easily cut out, there's not a lot there. Um, but, but when we bring the January stuff, that would do what we would spend our savings would be on capital items. Does that answer all your questions?
I just was wondering, since we were thinking on that line, if that part could be used in twenty twenty budget goes into savings. I'm sure.
Any other questions?
You want to talk about the budget? You want, let's leave that. I guess I got a question about the budget.
Okay, um, so any other questions on the October month, month ending report?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Do you have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the two thousand nineteen October year-to-date city financial report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. And then moving on to the second one, which is just a presentation in draft form that I passed out to you all and emailed out earlier today. Uh, I draw your attention to the cover letter highlighted in yellow on the front page. You know, this, I'm bringing this to you. It's still in draft form, very much so, but it is balanced for the general fund. We've worked a lot this year, you know, on digging into our personnel numbers. We're still working through some issues on that. Um, so I did want to point out, number one, that this includes either adoption, as it's done in years past, of accepting the twenty twenty JSEF and any personnel changes that are outlined in the document. And then it has a two percent cola and education pay built into this document. But the department heads and the mayor met and we decided we want to hold off implementing those until the end of the third, of the first quarter at three thirty-one twenty in order to finalize that education policy further and make sure that the personnel categories are tracking along as a budget. Because we still had some, some questions about some of the changes that we made. We've got two percent vacancy built in there on some items and just some different things that we'd really like to see how that first quarter flushes out before we do those. Um, notable changes to this document include the added positions, which we discussed at the last workshop. And they're shaded throughout pink on the workshops. And then also the fire and police add being added to the SWB allocation. I sent that out in an email to you guys because I meant to highlight that. I had it, I had it highlighted on my sheet the last time we met. But by the time we got to the budget stuff, you know, I forgot to point that out. So it, it's the last page in this document of the, that change to the SWB. So if anybody has any change, any questions on that, I can go over it. And then lastly, what we just talked about, which this includes no capital for general fund. And we'll be bringing any general fund capital requests back to you separately in January. So, questions on the document?
Now, did we include certificate pay?
No.
That's gonna be reviewed in June.
Yes, in June. June, certificate pay, June.
June is certificate and then to change to education.
Yeah, June is not built into these numbers. The education numbers are built into these numbers. But the certification pay would unbalance this budget.
Right. Of course, that'll be mid-year and we'll, we'll see how things are tracking. It'll just be a budget adjustment if that's, if that's what you so desire.
Joy, would you explain to me, at least from what I've been able to think of this at the time, why, why do you, why do we budget no capital for the general fund until January?
Well, a couple of years ago, I started doing that because there seemed to be a tremendous amount of confusion by the council, kind of like with that question about savings, that whether we were truly balanced and, you know, what we were spending our savings on. And so I can bring it to you guys in December, but I would like that it be clearly separated. Because I don't want the misconception that we are, um, using our savings to balance our budget or using our savings to deal with personnel issues. Cause I think that's a dangerous slippery slope and doesn't meet the requirements of really adopting a balanced budget. So, um, you know.
Well, that's a good answer. I mean, my, cause my question was, so if we don't do this in December as far as the capital, you know, did that follow normal procedure for balancing the budget? See, you answered that question. Can I, want a clarification. I do trust you. I appreciate the hard work you put into this. Um, was, I just wanted to know for my purposes. And then my second question was, in this budget, I haven't had a chance to read through the draft, do we have funds allocated to the Salina County Economic Development Corporation?
I believe we, is that the one you wrote down a couple of years ago?
Don't think we did. I don't remember honestly off the top of my head.
I think I did take that out a couple of years ago.
I think it would be under admin, and I don't think it's its own separate line item.
Would you check on that and let us know, please?
Yes.
Another bitter request for that. And, um, I know we, we didn't fund that for the last couple of years. Part of that was with, uh, La Rock Metro's lawsuit on that. I mean, there was, uh, conflicting information whether or not cities could do it. Anyway, since that's all been settled, um, I want to see if that's in the budget and if not, if the council will write it.
I will find out and get you guys that information. Is there anything else that you guys would need from me? I mean, we'll, I'll continue and we'll continue. Department heads and everybody to refine this, but I don't expect any substantial changes between now and when we bring it back to you guys for adoption. So if there's anything that you feel would prevent you from adopting it, you know, I, I definitely want to, you know, address that. So if you could reach out to me and let me know if there's anything in here that you think needs further discussion. Otherwise, we're not planning on having any more budget workshops or special meetings going into the holiday season, so.
Just to be clear on the police and fire, the education pay is not gonna be adopted till March, though, right? The education, not the, so it's gonna be.
Stepping grade's already there.
No, I get, yeah, I got that. But the education pay for police and fire is not gonna be.
Education pay citywide.
Oh, it's just, it's citywide.
Citywide.
It's citywide.
It's citywide.
It's about fifty thousand dollars, if, if you remember from the worksheet that I did, um, for that, for that night after we talked about the A and P items, that education pay.
Talking to police and fire, they, they agreed to that. They, 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 they think stepping grade is much more important right now than education pay. And we want to make sure we get that right and in place before we step into the education and then step into the third.
Especially as it's policy written correctly.
Exactly, exactly.
Yes, that's, I think that's really the way.
And just like we've done this year and the previous years, if there is something we need to adjust during the year, you and the department heads and the mayor always bring that to council and we adjust the budget as, as we go throughout.
Excellent.
Yes, I mean, we'll continue. I'm gonna bring it to you by category. So it'll be like it's been for the last couple of years. Right now, it's in there by line item detail, just honestly because I didn't have time to get it full together by category. But, um, it makes it a lot easier. You don't have to bring all those little tiny adjustments for every little line. But, um, I think that's worked really well over the last two years. But, and as you see, you still get all the detail on my monthly report. You can see all the levels, but we don't have to bring it like if I'm, I mean, when we did it before, I had to bring it if we were a dollar over on any line. So now, yeah, we'll bring it to you as we've been doing for the past two years. And similar to the adjustments, I'm bringing it tonight.
Any other questions regarding the budget for two thousand twenty? All right, we'll move on to the next item then. This is item ten, resolution providing for the adoption of an amended budget for the city of Bryant for the twelve-month period, beginning January one, two thousand nineteen, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Have a motion and a second to adopt?
Is there anything that stands out in this that, that you want to bring to our attention? I'm sorry, I don't.
I mean, we had some good news in that we received back a lot of reimbursement revenue on our street projects. So that was a good thing. Um, you know, we have, we have a few items that, you know, for parks is in particular for general fund, but I think they're all things that council's aware of, the specifics we, we put in there. So, um, you know, that's, those are the two main big items. Um, there's some bond fund stuff and, you know, we're, we are legally obligated to do those items. I just bring them to you more or less just for the sake of keeping them informed on the bond items. Um, so I'd know, I mean, not really, there's not a lot for water wastewater. Did anybody have any questions on the notes up to this time?
No questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Moving on. Resolution two thousand nineteen dash fifty-three. Thank you. Uh, moving on to the next item, which is code enforcement. Greg Hugs, one of the code enforcement directors here. His first item is resolution designating Cap DD and FMA project manager. He can explain it better than I can.
All right. I looked into a grant, a flood mitigation grant through Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. Built a little paperwork and I received an invitation to apply. Um, this resolution is actually, it's just authorizing, uh, Central Arkansas Planning and Development District to oversee the grant and to manage the grant. Uh, it's a hundred percent grant. It'll cost the city one penny. Um, and it is for flood mitigation. It'll remove the home. The city will own the property in perpetuity.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution designating Cap DD and FMA project manager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And this is resolution fifty-four, two thousand ten dash fifty-four. Next item is an ordinance. And I'll let Greg carry it on.
Um, this is the first one. This is the business license. Okay. Um, we haven't raised these rates in several years. Um, you know, it's just, and the cost of doing businesses, as far as I can tell you for the reason, uh, to cover our costs for, you know, the privilege of them having their business in the city of Bryant. And that's mainly to keep them in compliance with the city codes and laws. Um, everybody does them different, uh, these fees are not out of line with anyone around us. Most are higher. They do have like a flat fee usually, and then they charge you based on the amount of inventory that you have in your store. It's very confusing. I think this is a lot easier. It's basically a fifty-dollar rate increase across the board.
Basically?
Fifty-dollar rate increase for each level.
Each class of business, yes?
Yeah, and it's based on your number of employees. Zero to tens, hundred and fifteen, eleven to twenty-five, two twenty-five, and then it just goes up from there. Hundred, over a hundred, six seventy-five.
And you'll need this passed by the July thirty-first, correct?
Um, if we can do all three readings, we don't need an emergency clause because I feel it's gonna be thirty days, correct?
Correct.
So we don't have to have emergency clause if we can do all three readings. But other than if we can't, or that's, that's y'all's choice. Uh, I don't really need.
But you're saying we need it to go into effect by January first?
I do, yes.
So this is the business license?
Yes.
What, what'd you say, licenses somewhere in Bryant, this would be a comparison, I mean, to other cities?
Yes.
Okay.
As I was saying, it's, it's not out of line with any of our surrounding cities. Some are a lot more, there's a few there less. Um, it's kind of the middle-of-the-road fee.
And Greg, this, this one and the following one are both in.
And these, these fees and the next one that would require.
Approved.
Are built into this, yours budget.
Motion to suspend rules and approve ordinance of first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read first, second, and third reading by title only? An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand and seven dash forty-three Exhibit A Business License Fee from the levied fee upon the privilege of engaging in any type on, in any trade, business profession, location, or colony for permanent and temporary business establishments in the city of Bryant, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Well, this is, but we don't need to declare an emergency if it passes tonight, so, okay.
So we don't need the emergency.
So we don't need the emergency clause.
Motion to adopt.
No, wait, we still have to.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Now it's your turn, Carlton.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt an ordinance amending ordinance number two thousand and seven forty-three Exhibit A, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, all in favor? No, roll call vote, I'm sorry.
Delancey?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Glenn? Henson? Henson? Radeau?
Yes.
Camino?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Kebab?
Yes.
Pass.
Motion passes. And since it was third, first, second, third reading, we do not need the emergency clause. So we won't take that part of it. So this is ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-five.
Mayor, tell me. Greg, when was the last time we did a right adjustment on those fees?
Whoa.
That's our question, I'm sorry.
Twenty-twelve.
Twenty-twelve, so it's been seven years? Okay.
All right, uh, item number thirteen is an ordinance amending ordinance number two thousand and twelve dash nine Commercial and Residential Permit Fees. Take it away, Greg.
Um, this is incremental. Like we've raised these fees over the years. Um, they pretty much used to be very, very cheap. And we've got up to where, about where we need to be, but we still need to get the prices up to cover our costs for the level of service that we provide. Um, some comparisons, I'm asking for fourteen cents a square foot. Mile mail is nineteen cents a square foot. Um, servicing is fifteen cents a square foot. Um, a lot of places are doing it. Like a five hundred dollar flat fee plus two dollars per thousand over a certain thing that, you know, but I've looked at all of them and basically what we're doing is raising ours by a hundred dollars. for instance, a twenty-five hundred square foot home, now a building permit would be, uh, it's like three hundred and fifty dollars. This would make it forty. Um, same thing in Little Rock would cost you six fifty. Um, same thing in Bentonville would cost you a thousand and twenty dollars. The Works Committee would be eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. And I tried to use Benton's comparisons, but they have not updated their fees since two thousand and nine. So I really don't think it's a good comparison. We are higher than Benton.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve the ordinance of first, second, and third reading by title only.
Have a motion to suspend the rules and read first, second, and third reading by title only. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Uh, and ordinance amending ordinance number two thousand and twelve dash zero-nine Commercial and Residential Permit Fees. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Have a motion and a second to adopt. All in, a roll call vote, please.
Delancey?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Glenn? Henson, 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 Kebab?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Camino?
Yes.
Radeau?
Yes.
Motion passes. We don't need emergency clause on this one. This will be ordinance two thousand nineteen dash twenty-six. Now, Louie?
Change.
Move on to Parks and Rec.
We, uh, we made a little bit of adjustment from soccer agreement, um, in the past. It was just January first, December third, before we go, that we put it in their actual season, uh, so that they get Midland Park during that season. And we work with them to give them space if they need it out season, just to clarify better details of when we actually have that part put through, uh, regulations. That's it. Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the Central Arkansas Soccer Club Usage Agreement. All in favor?
This is gone through the Parks Committee and it's gone through the Soccer Committee and everybody's perfect.
Well, we didn't have a call in the Parks Committee.
My lord, approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve Central Arkansas Soccer Club Usage Agreement. And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, Boxer side, it's just the debate's changed.
Motion to adopt.
Approved. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Have a motion and a second to approve the Box Oxy High School Swing Usage Agreement, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Always fun, Mayor comments, it's, uh, the nineteenth, next week is Thanksgiving, y'all enjoy the holiday. Don't forget, early December, the first Saturday of December, uh, there's a five K, it's called the Hosa five K, the school organization's putting it on. That's at eight o'clock in the morning, at nine o'clock at the stadium, there's coffee with the mayor, and ten o'clock that morning is the Christmas parade in a new and better location. Over near Longmont, uh, and I got nothing else right now that I can add. Council comments?
I got one. Um, just quickly, I, I, it's a weekly, it's a every meeting thing, are we anywhere closer to a lighter anything at, uh, Highway five and the Parkway? The only reason I ask is because it's now starting, there were, I saw two wrecks there the other day, I personally saw them, and we're getting more and more people that are calling saying it's very unsafe.
We pay R dot every week.
No, and I, I, I know it's all, I know R dot issue, I'm just wanting to know, do we have anything?
Uh, we're still addressing a letter, one of the things that we've asked for, I think we brought up at the last council, was to know what the rideaway was at that, the plan, the project, was going live in mind with that location. So that perhaps that the city could fund engineering to do the life that R dot would have to approve on. So at that point, that's all we can do at this point, would like to be able to do more.
I, I, I don't want to keep putting pressure, just because, uh, I'm now sending people, I've, I've got the R dot number saved, I'm giving everybody the R dot number, uh, because.
It's a year in a line.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm doing it because literally, I bet you I take four to five calls a week on that light and it's, I mean, it's, it's really dangerous.
Oh, I, I, I don't disagree with you, hold R dot in, and please keep applying pressure, I mean, give it out, we, you know. We, we work, we work real well with our friends at R dot, but, I mean, it is their rideaway, it's not.
Look, Mayor, can I ask a question, I don't know if this seems feasible, and some, some constituents in the, in the ward said, asked of this. During peak traffic times, like around school, is there, would there be a possibility of having Bryant police out there working traffic in that little intersection? I don't even know if it's possible, um, no, okay. No, I just had some people, some residents asked, and so I'm, I'm passing forth the message. One, to put one officer at that intersection is dangerous. And then I don't have the manpower to put somebody at the intersection, I mean, big time, there's accidents out there. Yeah, no, I get it. It would just be a. I'm just passing. Okay. That's all. Lot is gonna be the only solution to fix that.
Like people being extra careful. Go ahead.
I have a comment about December the fifth, we have a Boys and Girls Club Bingo Bash, that'll be at Bishop Park. I am well aware, I've been practicing my bingo skills, so I just want you to know that I'm announcing this so that all my friends can come and play bingo with me.
She knows it's not a game of skills, right?
Are you the announcer this time?
I'm the announcer.
Oh, that's even better. I might have to come play then.
December the fifth, at the, at Boys and Girls Club. Uh, six o'clock, but you have to buy your tickets in advance for a discount, otherwise you gotta pay.
You gotta pay a little more at the door. But y'all go, go good cause, uh, Butch has a comment, I believe.
Friday night, playoff game here in Bryant, so another victory for the Hornets coming up.
Be there, be square.
University room?
And just a, just a reminder that it is burn season and there is a burn ban in the afternoon for what, a mile radius around the stadium, two rounds or, I can't remember.
We don't want to smoke out the stadium.
We don't want to smoke out the football game.
Terrible.
We have done that, we actually smoked one out about three years ago.
One, as I wanted to ask, if, uh, next meeting we can have a little bit more air circulation there, I keep looking over, seventy-three and I'm melting, I'm big.
Boy, you split that open and, and lower the. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Mayor, my comment is, uh, motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, all in favor?